All right, folks, let me call the meeting to order and welcome you. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. Called and convened this evening, November the 12th, 2019. Having called the meeting to order, I'm going to ask Councilmember Jay Arrowood, if he would, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then a invocation for council. So if you'll please stand and join us for our pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the life and the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for giving me and giving this council the time and the ability to serve the city that you have blessed us all with. I thank you for the blessings you bestowed on all of our citizens. I thank you, Lord, that this council looks at each and every issue with you in mind. We strive, Lord, to do your will. And I pray as we go through this evening that as we do the business for your city, that all that we say and that we do will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Counsel, with that, then we'll move to the minutes of the council meeting. You have the minutes from the October 29th, 2019, meeting in town. If you take it, I'll entertain a motion. They be received.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do it. Any items of note for the court? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, it is our pleasure this evening to have a special recognition. We have got some giving thanks art show winners with us tonight. I'm going to ask Ms. Robin Bayuk, if she would, to join me up front. And I believe we've got some certificates to give to some winners. We only allow winners up here, so that's my way of keeping this a winner service. All right, we've got a lot of winners this evening, and we want to recognize as many of them that are here. And so this evening, we are going to recognize those folks, and we've got a certificate to hand. So if you would, if you will, join us up front, and we'll see if we can figure out a way to get all of you to be up here for a minute, and that way we may can get a picture in the unit. So starting with our elementary art show winners. First, second place went to Weston Brown with Mountview Elementary. And then the first place winner is Kai Wood from Woodland Elementary. And high school, 10th grade, third place in visual arts goes to Mariah Cusman from Eastside. Second place in visual arts goes to Jillian Whitby from Eastside. And the first place winner in visual arts is Mary Grace Walker from Eastside. Also in high school, second place in photography goes to Nicola Leto from JL Land. And first place in photography goes to London Chesney. And then in high school, first grade photo manipulation goes to Samuel Silva Gerardo. Good man. All right, that's my way of being sure that they get their certificates. 11th grade students, visual arts, third place goes to Brianna Hoffman. Second place in visual arts goes to Jackson Cogan. And first place in visual arts goes to Melissa Trejo The Young. Moving on to high school photography, third place goes to Thomas Whitby. Second place goes to Emily Peeler. Pepper, excuse me. And first place goes to Jack Sherman. In high school, 12th grade, visual arts, third place goes to Adam Hitt. Second place goes to Jackson Cogan. And, oh, excuse me, Emma Anderson. There we go. And first place in visual arts goes to Anna Stewart. 12th grade in high school, second place in photography goes to Morgan Key. And first place in photography goes to Emma Anderson. And our last handover, second place photo manipulation goes to Skylar Owen. And first place in photo manipulation goes to Faith Miller. All right. We'll move on with our meeting this evening, and our next item for consideration is the administrator's report. Mr. Grickers?
Can you imagine their disappointments of missed this riveting report? I do have a couple of items to make you aware of. On our synergy project, we are moving along very, very well, as you will recall. We made a commitment to our downtown merchants that we would have the entire Trade Street intersection, the entire Trade Street section open by Thanksgiving. We were able to meet that three weeks ahead of schedule, so we're very, very pleased with that. We started, got that street section open, 100 block is now open, 200 blocks been open for quite some time, as well as 300 blocks. So that is completely passable from Point Set Street all the way through. We removed the cones that were designating the bollards and much of the obstacles that are out there in the area. Most folks are doing extremely well with that. It does seem that the orange was a good, was a good barrier for a lot of folks in moving that orange. There's been a few folks that have experienced our bollards already, and so we're monitoring that very, very closely. It's a new environment out there, and we are doing our best to educate the community and the public about that new design and getting people familiar with it. But it is still a construction area. We are on Victoria Street now, that section between Trade and Point Set Street. We're working in that area. We'll complete that portion of Victoria. We'll move back, pick up the area from Main Street to Trade Street there. Then we'll continue our work that's happening on School Street. Then we'll go into the first of the year, and we'll start to see work in the Depot Street area. And then we'll move over toward Point Set Street, and then ultimately to the intersection of Point Set and Main, and Main Street being completed there as well. There's a lot of work yet to be done, so again, it is an active construction area. But the Trade Street area but for the intersections, those are completed now, and we're glad to have that street open for our merchants specifically in the downtown area. But again, about three weeks ahead of schedule at this point, very pleased with that. The project continues. We're actually a little under budget at this point. I'm not too excited about that at this point, but it's just the fact of where we are, that we are a little under, albeit a small little bit, but a little bit. And it's good for us to be able to manage this project ahead of schedule, on budget. And so we're very, very pleased with that. Couple of calendar items, again, just to remind you, our employee appreciation breakfast will be held on Friday morning, December the 13th. We hope that your schedules will allow you to join all of Team Greer as we come in for that event. And then also, just for a calendar item for you to go ahead and mark, Tuesday evening, December 17th, will be the opportunity that my wife and I look forward to our annual opportunity of inviting you into our home. And that Christmas gathering will take place on Tuesday, December 17th, on a non-meeting night. So maybe we've learned finally how best to try to schedule that. But we look forward, my wife and I look forward to hosting you in our home that evening. We are continuing to work on our council planning retreat. We had tentatively looked at that Monday and Tuesday, that was President's Day and the day after. There are some conflicts with that date, so we're now asking you to look at your calendars, possibly for that Tuesday and Wednesday, the 18th and 19th, or possibly that Wednesday or Thursday, the 19th and 20th. It's a very, very busy month for you. The first week in February is Hometown Legislative Action Day in Columbia. The following week is your regular council meeting week. We're looking to do this in the third week of February, which is your off-meeting week. And then, of course, the week following that is your second meeting of the month in February. So again, we're trying really hard to go in that middle week there. We'll ask you to look at your calendars, give us some feedback. If it works for us collectively, we'll get it on the calendar so that we can go in and hold that. It'll be an important planning retreat for us again this year. Many, many items for us to cover as we start to plan for our allocation of budget resources, staff resources into the next fiscal year as well. So we look forward to doing that, but it's a very important time for us to get together. I did want to express a word of thanks to council. I have completed my term on the International City and County Management Association Board of Directors. I want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve in that capacity for the last couple of years. It has required that I'd be away some, attending board meetings literally around the world. And it has been an absolutely wonderful experience for me, and I could not have done that without your support. So I officially rotated off of that board at our meeting in Nashville a couple of weeks ago, and just one more time to say thank you. It was a wonderful opportunity, literally had an opportunity to meet colleagues from around the world, made friends with those folks, and I look forward to inviting many of those folks back to Greer, and I look forward to, in the future, going and sharing time with them in their home countries and in their home states. So thank you, I do appreciate that. There are many items for us to cover in executive session this evening. It will, I am anticipating that to be a lengthy discussion for us. However, I am asking that you would hold over one item, and that is the item relative to the selection of the contractor for our parking garage. I have information that I need to share with you in executive session, so I would ask that you would hold that item over until after executive session, but it would be the only item that I would anticipate action on, but a number of items to discuss. Mayor, that concludes my report. Certainly available to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
I'll get the update. Counsel, in regards to appointments to boards and commissions, we have some terms that are going to expire December 31st, 2019. This is on the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. As you are aware, there are some fairly stringent requirements as to background and occupation and understanding of some of the issues that would be faced on this board. David Greer's term expires December 31st, 2019, and Ralph Johnson's term expires December 31st, 2019. We will look to our staff for information in regards to their service and possibly indication about their continuing in that, or if they are planning to step down, and we'll ask the delegates some information from staff in that regard.
Yes, sir. On behalf of Building and Development Standards, had an opportunity to have a conversation with Ruthie Helms. Both David Greer and Ralph Johnson have been active members of the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and they have indicated if it is council's desire, they would be willing to continue to serve.
Counsel, on the recommendation of our staff, I'll entertain a motion. Let's do this separate motions. I'll entertain a motion on Mr. David Greer.
Senator.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions in regards to his continued service on the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Ralph Johnson to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments in that regard? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the only other board that we've got, a term expiring coming up, is in the Greer Development Corporation Board of Directors. Kevin Duncan's term expires December 31st, 2019. I believe we have a staff recommendation in that regard as well. I know that there was some correspondence between Mr. Deaton and Mr. Grickers. I have also spoke to Mr. Duncan, who has indicated that he would be willing to serve again on that board. I'll entertain a motion from someone that Mr. Duncan's services be appointed again for another term. So move. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments in that regard? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Now, that's the way to take care of all those decisions.
That's done.
That's a first. Let's move to items of old business, the second of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 39-2019. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of Administration, Article 2, City Council Section 2-37 of the City Code to provide that newly elected council members and the newly elected mayor or be inducted into office during the first council meeting held in January. As you are aware, we had some discussion in this regard in our last meeting. Our current ordinance calls for the first working day in the new year has been our practice to try and observe that, but we are moving to one I think will be a better schedule for us in terms of doing that in our first regularly scheduled meeting of the new year. This comes for a second and final reading. No new or additional information in that regard, so I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 39-2019.
So move.
Have a motion and a second in that regard. Any comments or questions?
Just for me, what happens between December 31 and the day to our first council meeting for the incumbent?
Yes. The seated council member continues to serve until the new person is sworn in.
Other? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. This is the second final reading of ordinance number 40-2019. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Sycamore Greer LLC located at 112 Main Street and Jason Street from S1 to C1. Mr. Matt Mahan, do you have new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 40-2019?
No, sir, there is no new additional information at this time.
I see a motion.
So move.
Second. And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, which are listed on your agenda, the first of which is the first reading of ordinance number 41-2019. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Kenn and LLC located at 114 Chandler Road by 100 percent petition and to establish his own classification of RM2 for said property. Mr. Matt Mahan?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. The applicant is requesting annexes on the property to RM2 for a future townhome development. This is the current zoning of the area. To the left, northern area is Foxfield Subdivision. Here's the future land use, it's within a land use 3 community. And here is kind of an aerial view. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on this on November 18th for the zoning of the property. That's all the information we have at this time, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening?
Yes.
All right, will you be available for questions if we have any?
Yes.
Okay. And for a matter of record, your name, sir?
Steven Betts.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance 41-2019. So move.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Questions of Mr. Matt Mahan?
How many units are they proposing there?
We have not seen a plat yet at this time, but they can basically put 22 units on the property.
22?
22. It looks like they're just going to remove that house that's existing there, and is that right?
Would you like to address, counsel?
Sure.
You can come to the podium if you would, please, sir. And if you will, again, just give us your name and information for a matter of the record.
Sure, Steven Betts, owner of Kennon LLC, discussing property on 14th Chandler Road. So the proposed development is roughly 20 to 22, maybe 24 townhomes, we're currently in negotiation with builders to get letters of intent. There are, there is, was a building in time of purchase on the property that's very dilapidated. There's a lot of belly that's been removed, so now, you know, a lot is cleared. So obviously, we appreciate that, and we're pleased to be with you, really, counsel, today, as far as that goes.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Counsel, final thoughts? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the next item before us is a matter of new business, first reading of ordinance number 42-2019. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Willing Canada, William Canada, Bruce Canada, and Eric Canada, and William and Townland Canada, Rottle and Nancy Mason located at 3468, 3472, 3541, O'Neill Church Road by 100 percent petition and to establish his own classification of PD for said property. Mr. Matt Mahan?
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, this property is being requested to be annexed and zoned to PD. The developer is requesting to amend their original statement of intent for O'Neill Village to add within these three parcels 120 townhomes and 15,000 square feet of commercial space. The proposed development will resemble what is currently being built in O'Neill Village at this time. This is an aerial view of the property for the zoning. And this is the current future land use. The property is located adjacent to future land use 3. Here's kind of another aerial view, it's kind of hard to get a street view with the road there.
Is this going to be part of O'Neill Village?
Yes, yes.
Where I'll be kind of, I thought that's where I'd be, I just wanted to clarify.
This is kind of the conceptual layout for the subdivision, the hashed area up towards the corner of O'Neill Church, and Highway 101 will be the commercial section. This project did go before the planning advisory committee last week, and the developer has received some comments. There will be a traffic impact study that is required. This will go to planning commission on November 18th for the zoning of the property, and that's all the information we have at this time, but we'll be happy to answer any questions.
How is changing the zoning going to increase the amount of units? How many more units are they going to be able to get in here now?
With this addition here, they are requesting 120 townhomes. The overall for the project will be 715 total units for the entire O'Neill Village subdivision.
They're still currently building in there, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So they're just kind of transitioning more to the townhome, just to finish up? I mean, is this, is this the last phase of that development?
That I do not know. The developer is here, he might be able to answer that question if he'd like.
A show of hand, is the owner, the representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you for being here. Would you like to address, counsel?
Mayor, counsel, I'm Jeff Randolph. I am the developer of O'Neill Village and have been since day one. To answer your question, we are in, what is phase four? There is about 150 or so existing residents in O'Neill. Phase four, we added another 200 or so lots, so we're in that development. We have another 230 plus to go in the original part of O'Neill. This would just be an extension of O'Neill. O'Neill Village has both townhomes and rear-loaded homes and front-loaded. This parcel will just have primarily the townhomes. We will orient those, some of those townhomes straight on O'Neill Church Road, just like we did the single family.
So the 700 or so homes that Brenda mentioned, that's going to be the completed project with all the other stages that you're going to?
So if you say the original.
So it won't be adding to that 700?
No, it's, the original was 595, I believe, so we're just adding to that.
Other?
This question has nothing to do with this particular add-on, but the total development. It's been a long time, but there was...
Sorry, Chris.
There was... They all started by stores. I have no grandchildren, I have eight now. My wife comes to meetings now. There were plans brought to counsel, just to ask our opinion about a wooden automobile bridge. Is that still...
No, sir. We amended those plans. That bridge was going to cross a wetland.
Right.
And we got into the crossing and just wetland regulations, we ended up just going around that. So there is no, there's no bridge.
I got you.
Okay. Remember. And that crossing has already been made.
Are you finding more, the townhomes more desirable now? Is that why you're making the transition, or is it just to get more density, or?
Well, I think this piece of property lends itself to townhomes. I wouldn't say that we're seeing it more desirable. We have townhomes out of O'Neill Village. We probably have 29 townhomes there now. We've got additional in Phase 4. We typically scattered them around. I think this piece of property just lends itself, it's on the street. What's interesting is that you think of most townhomes, they're going to have all the bedrooms upstairs. And of the townhomes that we have available or purchased so far at O'Neill, 50% of those buyers are 50 years old. And I think that speaks to, they're looking for the livability and the lifestyle that we offer at O'Neill. Because you would not think a 50-year-old my age is going to walk up. And we have some townhomes where you have a garage detached, you walk up a flight of stairs outside into your unit, up another flight of stairs to your bedroom, and you're over 50. I mean, I think it just speaks to the ability and...
Others? Randolph, we appreciate your time this evening, but not only your time this evening, but the continued interest in this project and work on this project that is becoming, or is. Quite a good example of mixed-use project that we have looked forward to for a long time. I appreciate it. We enjoy what your city staff have been getting to work with. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Let's entertain a motion to receive 42-2019, and we'll continue our discussion.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any items of note or anything you'd like to add at this point in time?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, the next item before us this evening is ordinance number 43-2019, an ordinance to change the zoning classifications of properties owned by William Williams, Ronald Bruton Trustees, Megren Sohandran, Syed Yezde located on Memorial Drive Extension and Becky Don Drive from RM1 to DRD. Mr. Matt Mahan?
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, this is, the request is to rezone from RM1 to DRD. The proposed statement of intent for this development is requesting up to 150 townhomes, which will have three bedrooms and approximately 1,400 square feet of heated interior space, along with campus-style parking, and I'll show that site plan in a second. The development will have two accesses, one will be off of Memorial Drive, another one will be off of Becky Don. All streets within this project are proposed to be private at this time. Here's the current zoning of the property. And the future land use that's within a residential land use 3 community. And here's the proposed site plan. The reason you're not seeing that connection between the two is pretty much up here at the top, you see the flood plain, which is in the hash mark. There's a creek that runs through this property, so spanning that creek would eat into the cost for the developer. So he has proposed not to have the access to run across. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, oh, sorry, I apologize. Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 18th. The request was to approve the plan. That's all the information I have at this time, and we have to answer any questions you may have.
A show of hand, is the owner of the property, representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record indicating nobody indicated so. Floor is open for, I'll entertain a motion to receive 43-2019.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion of questions of Mr. Matt Mahan?
So they just asked to have the streets private? Streets, yes, sir. The reason they're going to have to be private is because they have on-street parking, public streets, we do not allow the on-street parking at this time.
Have Memorial Drive Extension as a state road?
Correct.
Is there going to be issue with a curb cut with the...
They will have to apply with them to get that. They have come to our PAC meeting back in October, and DOT has made comments. Okay, so they have to go through their process also, sir.
There's a pretty good turn right there. Coming down Memorial Drive Extension, it's going to be very difficult for people to take a left and come up the hill. I hope they have some type of suggestion on how to address that.
They could require a right turn, but we haven't gotten that back from DOT at this time.
Okay. I hope they do. I hope they give them some kind of way to...
This will still have to go back to Planning Commission for a final development plan approval, so we should have all of those comments back by that time.
Is there any green space or anything added with this project? I mean, I see the, you know, I guess, what are these, the circles here, is that the retention ponds?
Yes, sir. Those will be the detention ponds for the two halves of the subdivision. The rest of that, they are not going to really develop much of it. I think they will have some green space in between the units, and they will take out some trees, but they're trying to preserve, I think, as much as that as possible, just due to the potential creek this way.
Technically, they've got a lot of green space, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes. The overall site is roughly 17.6 acres, and they'll probably end up developing closer to 7A.
Do you see any other communities like with this project, for instance, that have green space requirements when we go multifamily, and they're not necessarily connected to a park, you know, via sidewalk in this scenario? I mean, is there more of a, like, more of an ask for a rural development like this? It's not rural, but you get my gist. I mean, it's not necessarily connected via sidewalk to a park, or it's not really, it's not close to here, for instance.
We do have requirements for open space. Typically, it's 25% of the total acreage, and of that, 25%, 50% of that has to be developable. Currently, to the right of this property, they have similar setup, all of these townhomes that are on, those two parcels are within the county, they're set up just the same way. I think that he's trying to keep with that style that is already out there.
Others?
You know, with Memorial Drive, have they given any thought to putting a turning signal? I mean, because it's getting more and more traffic.
Yeah.
And it's not marked now, and it's getting confusing. You know, I mean, some people know what it is because we've been around it so long, but some people have no clue that that left lane is a turning lane, and then this lane that goes straight across, because it's so long, I guess the markings are just starting to disappear now.
And a lot of people have also requested a signal at that intersection, and in the morning, it's very difficult to take a left, there's so much traffic down the hill trying to get to the school.
Yeah.
That they can't turn left, and head towards Sparkburg or wherever it is they're going to work.
Because they don't have that air on that one.
Right. But I know that there's also the project where they tried to align the red lights coming down 29, and I think that shortened the span that the light turns green, so it's really causing a lot of frustration for people. And I know as more and more units come, more and more houses come, and it's just going to make that turn a lot more difficult, once projects like this one, the one we discussed earlier, once they come online, it's just going to add to the bulk of the traffic in that area.
I know it used to be at night, if you were coming up Memorial Drive Extension towards Greer, and the light turned red, you could actually go right on way to Hampton, do a U-turn, and get down to Hampton quicker than waiting on that light.
Yep. Still can.
But we're not encouraging.
No, we don't encourage that.
Doesn't say no U-turns.
So we didn't encourage them.
Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, the first reading of ordinance number 44-2019. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer zoning code of ordinance by amending Article 6 requiring open space. Seems appropriate, since we just had that discussion. Mr. Matt Mahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting to amend Article 6, Section 14.6, this required open space section of the zoning ordinance, and better define the regulations. As you see on the screen in front of you, basically, we just tried to clean it up so it read a little bit better, and was easier for developers to understand. We have taken out just kind of a grammatical error in there, and the required open space may include both developable and undevelopable land, of that land of the dedicated open space, a minimum of 50% of the total open space must be developable. Before, we have had some issues where some developers were inferring that in the remaining districts was that, not in their district, but in everyone else's, that the requirement for that has to be met. So we're just trying to clean that up. We discussed this with the city attorney, and he felt this was the best way to do that. That's all that I have at this time. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this on October 21st, and did recommend a qu...
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to receive 44-2019. So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
The differentiation between developable and undevelopable, I mean, that's just to keep them from going into a flood plain like on that project before, and then making all the green space down there where it's...
I believe when this was written, the purpose of it was for the developable land, you don't want the developer to develop all of the developable land and then leave nothing but the remainder which couldn't be developed, so you want to maintain some of that developable land for that open space, so it has meaning.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, Item E, we're going to hold over until after information is gathered during executive session. We'll move on to Item F, which is the general elections results. Ms. Duncan, are you going to bring those information in regards to our November 5th, 2019 general election results?
Sure. I want to present the official certified election results. They were certified by our election commission Thursday, the 7th. They are in your packets. If you have any questions, I'll be happy answering any questions you might have.
I have a question. What changed with the process this time? I know it seemed to take a long time for the results to come in. What happened there?
It did. Greenville County was using the new voter registration, I mean, the voting boxes, and those took longer to calculate, because it's their first election using those boxes. They weren't accustomed to them, and it took a lot longer than they anticipated.
Okay.
We've got two steps.
Two steps? Yeah. It just seemed to take a while for...
Oh, it did.
I was expecting them to start spitting those results out, and then I started thinking that they were doing it to try to coordinate that with the 11 o'clock news. So I was just curious.
Any other questions in that regard? Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
We would ask for a motion to receive this information into the record.
I'll entertain a motion to receive this information into the record.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussions in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Oath of office will be administered on January the 14th.
Counsel, we have got a rather lengthy executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session in regards to the six matters at hand.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion during the executive session to discuss several contractual matters. The first pertaining to ACE, the second pertaining to CSX Railroad, the third pertaining to the City of Greer Parking Deck, and those are all allowed by State Statute Section 30-4-70A2. Also, some economic development issues here with the motion going to executive session to discuss those for Project Homecoming, State Statute Section 30-4-70A5.